Well, call around to call me in order. I'd like to give the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing up, the board reorganization. First order of business of chairman. The nominations?
Make the motion to nominate Commissioner Lightfoot as board chairman.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Do we have any other nominations? And if I make a motion, that's unanimous ballot.
It's a move.
We have a second?
Right.
We have a second? All favors, aye? All favors, aye?
Aye.
So, motion carries. Carry. Adam, you did it all. You want to do that? You want to let Adam do that?
It doesn't matter.
Let him do that.
It's ready to get out of there. Want to say cheers, dude?
So, do you...
He invited all the schools.
Only time to be switched during the year, I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know what she wants me to do. We got a small system. Flip this for this here.
Armors or board chair?
You got this one by here.
And we got Nukes.
Yeah, Nukes. I think we need to...
They're just hanging.
This Christmas season, you guys have to share some lyrics.
Is this your coffee?
Yeah. I forgot to grab it, but it's like the most... It was like, yeah, I don't know what I'm doing up there. Okay, I guess, well, I got more. Uh, we'll open nominations for vice chairman.
I'd nominate Commissioner Frith.
Do we have a nomination, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Seeing none, we're going to turn the motion, then unanimous ballot, the question for Frith. Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries and push this back to the vice chair. Okay. Portfolios. Uh, currently...
I'll just switch to you then.
Yep, I'll do the switch again, so I'll take, if that's okay with everyone, auditor, human resource, emergency management, BSO. You can take building grounds, tax director, ITGIS, and highway.
But any objections?
Can I go ahead and comment on that? Would it be okay if I stay on highway again? Is that okay with you guys?
Absolutely.
Just because I get all the calls anyway, since I live all over the country, so I might as well stay on it, and that's okay with everybody?
I, like I said before, I still think we should have two on that department, but Adam could be the lead, so...
Yeah, I mean, well, you could be the lead now, since I...
No, no, you'd be the lead. What are they, full first budget, so we should have two commissioners here actually.
So, can we use a second then?
You? Yeah, but I'll take two. That's okay.
How do you want to use the country, your own desert, Adam, and then you understand?
Well, I think that's probably why we get the calls, and Jeff pays costs too, because we go back to each other. Okay. Currently, Commissioner Frith's got state's attorney and county agents. Commissioner McField has recorder, treasurer, superintendent of schools and attending care. Commissioner Olson has chair. Does anybody want to make any changes? Shuffle it up a little bit here.
I'm fine with what, what I have.
Okay?
Yep. Okay. Yeah, that's just fine.
Okay. I guess then, we need a motion, we need a motion to make the changes as discussed. We have a motion, we have a second. We have a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Minutes from the previous meeting.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. Aye. We have a second. Additions or corrections? The only thing I was gonna say is, I noticed when I was reading through them, Randy, um, on this last paragraph where we're talking about the cars, we don't have this commissioner's name on the second. I don't understand. I feel special, I missed, I got something. So, I don't know, we'll have to probably watch the video back to see who...
No, I don't.
Or do you have it, did you just read it, or did you just mistape it? And everybody on the talking booth here? Okay. Just so you know, I thought you saw there. Yeah, not a problem. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any additions or corrections, or further discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries, bills, with the additional bills on the desk. And questions?
As far as highway bills, uh, quarter machine labor was sixty-nine hundred, and that was mostly cutting edges? I missed a lot of that, they went over two thousand dollars, but... And the city of Dell's Lake was fourteen thousand for our share of the asphalt, on running to county two, to speed to town, which is quite reasonable.
I was gonna say, what percentage should we pay on that again?
I would have to ask Mike, but there were some federal dollars there too, so that's not fifty percent, you know, with federal dollars to appear part of it.
When I saw fourteen, I thought that seemed pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
I gotta ask you, Kevin, when we put that cobbler, when we replaced that cobbler, did the county put the whole bill?
Nope, they paid for the cobbler, so we paid for the installation. The cobbler's were thirty-eight thousand, something like that, and with the camera running, we didn't spend that much putting it in, but...
Okay.
They couldn't have hired a done for less than that either, or...
Okay, yeah, I'm sure they couldn't have.
No, yeah, we already had that, we already had everything ready to for all the other work to do anyway, so...
Okay, I was just curious about that.
And then JLJ bill was, uh, design work on Ramsey two. That was a contract that we had those down.
Okay.
Make a motion in front of Bill.
Okay, we have a motion.
Right.
And we have a second. Any further discussion on the bills? Seeing none, roll call position.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Frith?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye. Motion carries. Financial reports. Anything of note?
No words, we're sitting good. We got the LEC bill in for today, so, um, after the meeting and after everybody gets all the bills paid for, then we'll look at what we need to do for transfers, for budget amendments, but everything will...
Can we do that for the next meeting?
Yep.
Back to that?
Move to approve financials.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion on the financials. Seeing none, roll call position.
Brown?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Frith?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye. Motion carries. Treasurer's checks. We have a motion and a second on the treasurer's checks, I'm gonna be special. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Agenda, any doubt?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to further agenda if presented. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries, later, please. Bill?
Hi. First up, first, last off, huh?
That's right.
Um, several things actually this morning. Of course, we all know about the harvest. Um, a lot of concern out there about financial conditions of some of our producers, and, um, there, there will be some that will have to do some, uh, configuring of things to make things happen. I would probably say though, that you might see a lot more exit this spring of people that are in the sixty kind of range, you know, thinking that maybe they should just leave stuff alone and do something else. I don't know if that'll happen, but that would be my guess, that we see a percentage of people that probably won't receive the most of it. Um, roundup is coming up, January seventh and eighth, Tuesday, Wednesday, um, full slate. We got Commissioner, uh, Doug Green coming to open up the session on Wednesday morning. He's gonna talk about the scamming stuff that's been happening, not only in grain, but also livestock. Uh, so he'll be the opening act on Wednesday morning. Um, we got Brian Gray coming from, he's the editor for Pro Farmer. Um, he's, he cost a few dollars to get here, but we've got, I'll take care of it at our side, so he'll be here, he'll end the day, the first day. So, we got some really good speakers coming up this year, and of course, some of it is financial stuff, and some of it is soil health. Uh, but that looks to be a really good, uh, two days, again. Uh, with that said, I'm hoping the commission, which is in favor of us having the doors unlocked again, north and south end for most two days. Is that something that can work? Okay, we greatly appreciate that.
That was like, we had a motion, we missed that, I have to ask something.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, um, I probably got two roundups left that I'm gonna probably be a grandpa rather than a worker. So, with that being said, I'll ask Sarah Flady, she's sitting here, if she would assume office chair beginning January one, that way I'd be around to, and it's not a difficult task, but just to be around, should something need some questions or whatever, so you can expect that in our office come January one, that, I'm probably, if nothing else, have her come. I will still come to the commission meetings, but being office chair, she's getting her master degree, should be completed December twentieth with graduation.
Mayday, congratulations.
So, she will, she will be very happy when that day comes to an end, because it's been quite a long for her. Um, other than that, our four H program, we're getting kids almost daily, right Sarah?
We are.
Almost, it's like, wow, if any of you are interested here, anywhere, we need four H leaders.
Yes, they do a great service to the community, those four H leaders.
Yeah, yeah.
Unbelievable.
Yeah, and of course, our office has been just super, super active with all kinds of stuff. We got, um, a holiday arrangement class that Sarah and I are teaching on Friday.
Me, geez.
Feel there.
You're really good at helping.
And we also have a design your own succession plan coming up on the fourteenth, right Sarah?
Fourteenth.
Yep, and that's about, if you don't have a will, there are some, some things in place of how you're gonna move forward with your estate war, you know, new family members coming in and stuff, it's a great opportunity to come and learn about some things that you should take care of. Not to, not telling you to do it, but things that you should maybe consider, or maybe bring to the top of your mind, or something you should look at back home of the family. And lastly, because I'm getting to that age, we're gonna have a Medicare one-on-one class on December the twelfth, it'll be at six-thirty. And as for anybody, doesn't matter what county, doesn't matter the age, if you get to be that fifty years of age and older, and even people who have done Medicare for a long time, it'd be a great opportunity to come and learn about Medicare and some of the things that's, that maybe you're missing, or just to be, have some questions to ask. That's put on by a person from Minot State College. It's not a come and sell you a plant thing, that's not what this is about, it's just an FYI.
December twelfth, Bill?
December twelfth. It'll be in the meeting room in the basement. However, I've been getting a pile of people talking to me about coming. Uh, we might need to talk to Roger and see if we can move it to the gym, should we need more room. I'm, I'm actually anticipating a pretty good crowd for that, so we'll see. Before, we've got meetings where you vote for fifty and you get ten, and the next time you vote for ten and you get one, so you never know.
Do you want any social security people there, or...
This gal can answer all that.
Maybe an answer, but nobody there to...
Not from social security, no, for me.
With the ins and outs of the program?
She, this gal, this, this, she can answer them, she's very good. Yep, very good. Social Security, uh, Medicare, the scams, uh, the parts that you want to be involved with, that you don't want to be involved with, it's all about learning about Medicare.
Little story, I just about got scammed a week ago. On the phone. Through Medicare. I'd sent a letter back looking for some information on dental insurance through Medicare. Yeah, I got a phone call back, twice. First one, I hung up right away, and the second one, you know, the next night, they called, about same time too. And, uh, it was close. It was definitely a scam.
You know, isn't that sad? If these people would put their efforts into a good job...
Just think what they could do.
Three different people I talked to that night on that phone call, three different people. And I gave them no, you know, social security number or nothing, I wouldn't give them that. But it was a scam. And then I was worried that I maybe had misspoke, so I called both banks and told them to shut the council. But then nothing happened, so I don't think I gave my identity, but they come across as negative people, you know?
Yep, they're pretty deceiving.
Yeah.
Yep. So, if you know anybody that's interested, pass the word. We would like pre-registration, there's no cost. But if we get pre-registration, we see the numbers, that will help us decide whether we need to go to the gym or stay on the stairs.
Yeah, but it's a decent night, but you have a good turnout.
I'm, I'm thinking we should, but, like I said, we planned for thirty-one, then for court meeting, and we had a hundred twenty. And we served dinner, so guess what? We were scrambling, but we made it. And we were trying to plan for thirty, and we had one, if you remember.
Reason I ask about social security people, it's so difficult to get in and see them face to face. And, you know, they send out this material, and you reply, and then you get a scam call. And you wonder how in the hell they got the numbers to talk about Medicare, you know, Medicare to me. You know, I just like, how'd they get that information that I was interested in that?
Yep, and she'll talk about scammers too, her, she and another gal from the Minot State College will be addressing those issues. So, even if chamber, if we help pass the word around it.
Sure.
Okay?
I was like, you're gonna be busy. Lot of stuff going on.
Very.
Very good.
What do you mean, you want to say? Okay.
How long you been working on your masters for?
Four and a half years.
So, you are gonna be happy, is that...
Be happy.
Congratulations.
So, why about we?
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stacy?
Good morning. We had another busy month in November, uh, short month, but yet we still had over hundred some people. Uh, I did spend time out at Camp Crafton, uh, during the, uh, handicap veterans hunt. They had a supper on Monday night of that hunt, it was two-day, Monday and Tuesday hunt. The day that, or that evening I was out there, they had, uh, they split it into, uh, five guys get to hunt Camp Crafton per day, and three were successful at harvesting the deer that particular day, a few misses. And I didn't hear back about the second day, so I'm not, I'm not so sure there's much success out on that second day. They probably got them riled up pretty good, where they found their hiding places, but, uh, the veterans that were there enjoyed it, and they were from all over the state. So, uh, that thing is doing its job as far as, uh, getting the handicap veterans out there. So, that was a pleasant surprise there. And then I imagine we should talk about my replacement, getting that advertised. I did turn in my resignation, and if you had a chance to read it, entertain your thoughts of what you think about, uh, but I'd like to see Dunn to get my replacement, uh, on the ground and, and, uh, interested in doing the job.
The question that I would have, Stacy, would be the length of time that you'd like the replacement to shadow?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do you think that would be necessary?
Oh, uh, completely necessary. The state will offer, uh, three to ten days of training, and that there's, there's no way that that gets anybody, um, educated closely enough of what they would expect. Um, and then with us having three counties, uh, that's, I mean, one day in each place won't be enough to teach, uh, you know, every drawer, every file cabinet, every location, that, the things right, like in Minna Lakken, we have a vault downstairs with the records, plus the offices upstairs, or on the second main floor. Uh, there's just enough stuff to try to learn there, that, uh, uh, there's a lot of ins and outs that they'd have to get their feet wet with. And, uh, I remember when I started, I had three days of training. I was lost for years. Not until the computer system came along, and then we had, uh, four or five different, uh, follow-up training trainings that you actually get to know what's expected of you. And with the government changing things continuously, um, the recent change, uh, the, what they call now the mission act, which has replaced two other acts. Uh, it's not working. And, uh, it, it's just, there's a lot of frustration there, and I just assumed see someone learn from someone with experience, uh, to get, know what they, I've already had others that I wouldn't expect to be interested in the job, have asked me if they can come and shadow me. I've got a gentleman on, on the reservation, who wants to take the position on the reservation, and he wants to come and shadow with me, because I've done his casework and gotten his benefits. Now, that's something we would have to discuss, but, uh, I told him, get the job first before we discuss shadowing. But, uh, like, but for this position, I believe that, uh, it would be a part-time, the shadow would be a part-time situation, but yet, uh, going to each place and introducing them to the, each, each county's different, each, each one has its own little workings, and, and, uh, just so they learn who they have to report to, and where they can find this and that from, uh, there's this, there's a lot there.
Where is, um, what day did you want to resign? March?
March twenty-sixth, that's the day after the spring conference. I'd like to have the, uh, replacement to come with the, uh, to that conference, and just so he knows what's expected of him there. And, uh, and then the following day after we're back to the conference, I'm out the door.
Would you want this guy on board about first February or something?
At least.
Okay.
Yep, that's, that's my thoughts.
Well, I think foolish if we don't take advantage of the experience that Stacy has gained through...
And I've already, I've already stated, I will be, might make myself available with phone call and whatever, because I know that's coming. Just the veterans that know that I'm leaving have asked, can I call you at home? Well, I won't turn them down, but, uh...
But I think foolish if we don't take advantage of the experience he's gained through this position, and pass it on to the next person. I mean, if it's six weeks, they'll be it. I mean, it's a no-brainer. Guy's willing to do it, he's not locking out the door, you know, and take a hike, you know?
We need to handle it.
You know? He's been over here. So, if we're related, we can...
Sorry.
But this is a valuable program to a number of people, the three counties and reservation, and how many more counties?
Uh, just, uh, two weeks ago, I received a call from a gentleman from Minneapolis, because he had a friend who I had helped from, I believe Detroit Lakes or someplace in, in Minnesota. And so, the gentleman from Minneapolis thinks that I can work miracles for him down there. Well, after I listened to his case, he didn't have much more to go on, but, uh, I, I didn't refuse him. I advised him on who to talk to and what he should expect. I didn't know I was so well-known.
I think we should open it up right away. We've gone all through the Christmas holidays, and there won't be much done then, so...
That's gonna be my question for Crystal. If we're looking for like February one start, we should probably put together the description and get it out there pretty much immediately, because we're gonna have to probably look at hiring mid-January, so that they, you know, assuming, uh, just under the possibility it's somebody that maybe has another job that wants to come here, they'd have to get a couple weeks notice and all that kind of stuff, so...
Well, the other thing I think we have to do is, you know, decide who's gonna be on the hires committee. Probably pretty reasonable to have, uh, have some representation from the other counties too.
Yeah, and...
What did, I was just gonna ask, what feedback, what feedback to do, yeah?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just bring it up for everybody. Obviously, you have the sheet in front of you, but Nelson County had a couple different questions, and, and I think some of them are stuff that doesn't have to do with hiring necessarily, but just long-term questions, you know, like, are we gonna stay on the same percentage basis? You know, and that's something we can work out after we get a new person hired, you know? If we hire somebody ahead of time and have them work with Stacy, who's gonna cover that salary? Obviously, they, they have that question, but it's a reasonable question. Then they would like to have a commissioner sit in on the, on the hiring, which I don't think is necessarily unreasonable.
Neither will.
And I didn't hear that from Benson.
We haven't heard from Benson.
Let's relay this to Benson then.
Yeah.
See, and then see what Nelson wants, and we'll probably put a commissioner on, I would suggest.
I mean...
For each of those counties, and two from ours probably, and open that...
I mean, job description is job description, so I mean, that's not a, not a complicated thing, to put the job description together. I was, my only thing would be on the, on who's gonna pay the secondary, the costs. We've got it in our budget that we can do it. I guess, from my thought process, I'm, I, I think it's reasonable for us, I mean, if the other counties want to chip in, that's great. If not, I think we should just be willing to take the cost on, because like you said, it, it's worth training the next person well. And, uh, also, at the end of the day, if, if the other counties decide at some point in time they don't want to use our BSO anymore, it's still gonna be our responsibility to make sure we got a good BSO, so I mean, if it costs us a little bit of money, make sure we got it figured out, right? I think that's what I gotta do.
Great idea.
So, yeah, I think we should figure out, get the hiring process going, and, and probably, let's throw that on your plate, Crystal, huh? And, uh, and get rolling probably.
Yeah, we should.
Have we formally accepted Stacy's resignation?
Not that I'm aware of.
I say, I don't remember doing it.
I'm like, we do that.
So, the motion would be to formally accept the resignation, and then, and then, and have Crystal set up hiring then? Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, further discussion. If it's okay with everybody between Candy and myself, we'll get a hold of the other commissions and kind of tell them where the conversation is.
I would just like to ask Crystal and Stacy, uh, are there people out there that are looking for this guy?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you know Crystal?
Uh, I guess I'm not, I'm not sure on that, but...
No, I had, I had a young gentleman in yesterday, and I don't know that he'd heard that I was retired or not, but he said, I would like to get your job.
Was that a threat? No.
Well, no, it was, uh, he's unemployed at the time, and that, uh, uh, and he's not from the area. But we do have another gentleman that's been talking to me for the last few years, and he's, his responsibilities at Camp Crafton have been dwindling, and he would be a perfect candidate. He knows the, the business, he knows the forums. He's been doing a lot of this for, uh, the guard guys, and, uh, he would be an excellent candidate.
He's a veteran.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I know who it is, he's a nice guy.
I think we should definitely, not it's mandatory, that they're a veteran, you know, for this position.
That would be your guys' perception, and, and whatever you, but by the state, it's not required.
It's not required, is it?
Yeah.
But I think we should definitely...
Uh, from my experience, my point of view, a veteran receiving disabilities, there's gonna be far more, uh, experience on what the process takes than a veteran who's never dealt with the VA before. Yep, we've, I've, I've seen that.
Okay. My question would be then on timeframe. If, if we are gonna open up hiring, how long do we have to have the hiring window open, do you think?
Um, so in that policy, we put ten days business days, so two weeks.
Because, you, you know, we're gonna, are we essentially through this motion saying that we're gonna allow Crystal and, and between her and asking Stacy, make sure, put the job description together and just put it out there, or do we want to see it at the next meeting? Before we approve, put it out?
We have time to see it at the next meeting, you know.
I'm just, just wanted to see what you guys think.
There is a job description, we just gotta tweak it a little, wasn't that what we said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you guys are okay with seeing it at the next meeting and then, so we're basically direct to Crystal, put it together, locate it at the next meeting, approve, put it out, and that'll give us enough time for middle of January, hopefully.
Yeah, well, I'd be comfortable with Adam looking at it, as long as there's a veteran, you know.
You, you have that.
You have to be a veteran, I mean, I don't think.
I think there's someone's century code on that veterans', on the hiring of that veterans' position, but I have to take a look at it, cause I haven't looked at that for a while, but I thought there was something specific in there on that.
Well, we'll give the directive, we'll put it together and then we'll kinda, we'll go from there, if it looks okay, or we'll try to probably get back for the next meeting and probably get the rest ready to do it and just so everybody has. Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the reservation and to allow Crystal to put the job description together, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Thanks Stacy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, excuse me. We'll skip Crystal for right now and we'll go into the eight-thirty real quick. Says we have to stay on time, final reading of the Ramsey County lodging and restaurant tax ordinance. Do we have anybody here to talk about that? Did anybody hear from anybody to talk about this? Crickets. Crickets.
I don't hear anything negative.
I, I, all I've heard so far is like I said in the last meeting was like one positive email and then I haven't heard anything.
As long as we're insisting with what the city's doing and I believe we are, so.
I couldn't match the city as far as I understood, um, no changes to make or anything like that, I guess. Yeah, just, just the change that we made at the last meeting, but that was, that was put into a copy.
To the board, do we?
Yeah, we've got, we'll have to, uh, so the process would be after this is done, if we approve it, um, it'll go to the state, so the state can get their stuff rolling and then locally, um, we'll have to put an agreement together with the tourism division like the city has, just a, an agreement that they'll handle the funds basically. And then we'll have to appoint two people to their board, once everything is lined up then with the agreement, so. That's a, kinda horrible, I guess, amount of.
We have a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the final draft and hearing on the res, lodging and restaurant tax, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, further discussion?
So just, just to clarify, this is the vote to enact this right now?
Yes. We voted on it about four times enough, so it's a good question. Okay, this is the vote to enact the, the ordinance, yes. Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we will roll call this, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have the ordinance. Okay, now I need a motion to close the hearing. Second motion and a second, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries, the hearing is closed. Excuse me. Thank you for your work on this too, Susie, and helping me out, so I appreciate it. Okay, from there, we will go to Crystal.
Okay. So what I've been working on, um, is our drug testing policy and putting together disciplinary policy. Um, hopefully I'll have it ready by the next, your next meeting, but I went to quite a few seminars put on employment, by employment attorneys. Just because everybody, they seem to have just a little bit different view on what a drug testing policy should, should look like going forward. You know, with the medical marijuana coming into play and, you know, the different type of things that we should be testing for, so that's what I've been working on there for policies. And like I said, hopefully that will come in next meeting after I get to department heads. Um, for department heads, our last meeting, so I've been taking the leadership training and one of the things in it was our five pennies of positivity, so I thought I would share it with our department heads. Um, I don't know how well they liked it at first and I hope that they're still carrying on, but we'll see our next meeting. But it felt like I didn't share some of the thanks from the leadership training, I really wouldn't put no value on it for the county, so. Um, the employee breakfast that we held recently, it was a success and thank you for all that contributed, our department heads also contributed, the majority of them. So Roger Cannon made the sausage and Kevin got our cover prizes from Cat and K L J, thank you K L J. So, so yeah, so that was a good thing. Um, we're looking at a holiday party for employees, we're looking at January possibly, we haven't brought it to back to department heads, but it was discussed at our last department head meeting, how we could put something together. So, how do we come in? Um, employee evaluations, we've been working on that. Sometimes we forget the importance of them evaluations, but just this last year, I've had to pull out two evaluations and there's been things that have been addressed on the evaluation that I could show that were addressed. So evaluations are extremely important and all the departments, um, have been working on them. The majority have gotten them, we're lacking in one department and that's, um, the sheriff's department, I haven't heard anything on that, so. But them evaluations are always important to have for us to go back on, so. So, that's that. Been also working on our training topics for next year, we talked about it in our depart, last department head meeting. Um, some of the topics, and anytime you guys have topics that you wanna throw in the mix, that you think are important to get out to employees, you gotta let me know. But some of the topics, just so you guys know, is, um, growing a challenging employee, dealing with difficult people, because it seems like we're constantly in, um, with the public, they sometimes have a different view and we're dealing with that difficult person or even employees to employee. So, that multi-generational, um, cause we're getting so many different age group ranges in our workforce, so how we work together. Customer service is another one. Team building, um, our civil rights training and then the reasonable suspicion to go along with our new drug testing policy. So, so them are kind of the topics that we discussed and are gonna fun on for next year. Like I said, if there's any that you, you wanna see happen, let me know. So another thing I've been working on was, with social services, um, at the last association meeting with HR, uh, the post-counties, their HR people have been really heavily involved, however, their benefits have differed quite a bit. So, but one of the things that came up was employees weren't really notified on what was gonna happen, what was the next steps. So I worked with Rhonda and put a letter together for the employees, um, in the other counties to just kinda say, this is what we're working, you know, who the interim director is and you're gonna be able to carry over your sick leave and your vacation leave and just different things like that, and then when Nathan would be meeting with them, so they knew kinda knew what to expect. So, I worked on that with Rhonda and, yeah, that's about it.
Yeah, I know, they've gone out and talked to the other counties, like they were all over last week and I think they were doing that some the next day too, so. So, that's good, that's positive, cause it's, it's good to keep everybody in the loop, obviously, it's, when, there's a change like that.
Right.
You wanna know what's going on with your job and how everything's gonna be handled, where your paycheck's coming from, so that's a good thing. I, I was gonna ask you the question on, you said you've been going to a lot of different conferences on like the, on the drug testing policy stuff.
Yeah.
What has been kind of the consensus on how they should handle medicinal marijuana? I mean, is it, is it going to be a deal where we wanna handle it if, if somebody has uh, a card that we're going to allow usage, or I mean, how, 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 how they've been dealing with it, I guess?
So it'll depend on what type of position that they're in.
Okay.
Um, and they would have to, of course, bring that forward to us as their employer and they have to, like in our policy, in this new policy, it states in there that if they are on a, um, medical or a prescribed drug, I don't think it's a term like that, but if they are on a prescribed, it's their responsibility to let us know as an employer that it might impact their ability to do their job safely. So.
That's state law?
Not that part, but that's how.
Not that part, is it?
No, but that's how we get it back onto the employee to let us know as an employer that they would possibly be on something that could, you know, impact their job ability.
Yeah.
I gotta ask this question, Crystal. When you use medical marijuana, medical marijuana,
Yeah.
can you test for that different than you can test for regular marijuana?
You can.
Is there a different test?
No.
There isn't?
There isn't and you can never tell exactly when the last time they used it. So that's why, um, that's why they're moving to.
You don't run after that.
Yeah, but then we gotta remember though, we're, we're under the disability act where we have to take in consideration accommodations for that employee that would, that'll need that medically.
So basi- basically, the, the right way to go about it is, you know, you're not gonna face, in, in most cases, you're not gonna face disciplinary action if you came to us prior to being tested positive, you know, in other words, you can't say.
Well, that, I, I think as a county, we can put, we could put regulations on usage still though. So like, if you're going to be taking medicinal marijuana, as, and you, you tell us and you come in and say, this is something I'm going to be using, we could still say, well, that's fine, but you're not going to be able to drive vehicles and things of that nature. So we could say, if you're an office worker, you never have to climb in a vehicle or something like that, that we can allow that usage, but we don't have to allow somebody to hop in a vehicle or something. It, no different than, I mean, in all honesty, I, I don't know how our policy reads currently, but if somebody was on a, an opioid or a controlled substance, it would be no different. If somebody was taking OxyContin or something like that for a, a pain management issue, we would want that disclosed, so we knew that they shouldn't be operating every machinery or something of that nature.
Right.
Okay, what's the state policies now, what are they doing? How are they doing it?
Like, the, at the state level?
State offices.
I wanna think of the state policy reads that they have as zero tolerance, but however, now with the.
They do have it?
I know they do for C D L people, so that's.
Yeah, and I think that's reasonable.
But they would be in that same position with the medical marijuana to have that employee tell them and so everybody's, you know, knows that they're using it. But one of the things that's kinda stuck in my head from the trainings, that one example that was used is, say they're using medical marijuana because they can't sleep at night. So now they're able to sleep at night, they're coming at a higher performance when they're coming to work the next day. So I mean, this, it, there's different scenarios that go along with the medical marijuana that it would possibly make them a better employee to be on it and to be able to use it.
I mean, that's sort of the definition of medicine, right? Like, makes you better.
So.
Well, anything at the right level is, yeah, and it is, we have to make sure that we have a tight policy on it so that we know who's using what. And within reason, you know, within what is our, what our guidelines are and what we can, what we can reasonably.
Yeah, and the reasonable suspicion training that is on our schedule for next year, that'll be a big one, because it'll get put on more to the department head to monitor and to watch their employees and to know if something's off. So that they're not getting in a car or getting in a truck or something and.
Oh boy.
Yeah.
You can see what the state has such a hard time accepting this and passing it, if, just for this fact. Right here, right here, we're, we're trying to do something else.
Yeah, and I. And not to get my opinion, but I worry about like the recreational, what it will do from an employer's standpoint.
Yeah.
Uncontrolled, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, we can't, obviously, all of our employers, they go home, they do whatever they're going to do, so we, all we can do is put proper policies in place to make sure that when they're here, we have coverage from a liability standpoint. So if, if they don't disclose that they're using something and they go out and get in an accident or something, we've got it in our policy that says it's zero tolerance. When you drive vehicles, you were supposed to disclose and all that, so we've got covered, you know, from that standpoint, so.
Answer this question, maybe Lucas can do this. How easy is it to get from a doctor, a prescription to use medical marijuana?
I've never.
Is, one is, one, one is not a prescription. It's not, it's not a prescription. You can't have a prescription, cause it's still a controlled substance at the federal level. There is a specific list of ailments that medicinal marijuana can be used for, it is in century code. The recommendation has to be made by a practitioner, then that has to get to the state and the state has to clear it off of that list. So if it's a certain thing, you can get a card. Once you get that card, then you can go use, you can go, uh, get the medicinal marijuana at that point in time. Other than that, if you're not in that classification standard, you cannot get a card and you cannot use medicinal marijuana. I know a little bit about it, cause my wife had to go through all the training, she was explaining it to me, so I was just.
Well, and when you think about it, how many employees we have and then picking up the other counties with that number of employees, we're eventually gonna come into it.
Yeah, we're gonna run into it at some point in time, so we have to have a quality policy in place. I mean, we're actually a little bit behind the ball on it, because it's been out there for a while now, but it, you know, I think everybody's playing catch-up, trying to figure out how we should handle it the correct way.
No, just a question, you know, because I'm genuinely curious. We've got a lot of states now that have legalized it to some degree and some have had it legal for several years now.
You should.
Is there, is there any, any scientific studies or evidence that, that supports that like, you know, using medical marijuana makes you a worse driver or a higher liability? Has that ever been established, or is that just a bunch of us in a room being like, I don't want them damn kids being high and driving?
It's a good question.
I don't know. Well, it's all logical, right, when making.
Well, I, I don't know, I don't know. I, I'm just saying, I like, I've never, I've never personally come across any research that supports that.
I guess I've never looked for research, so I could tell you.
C D L, what is the tolerance on a C D L on alcohol, point four-two?
Alcohol's one, yeah, oh, two or three.
It's pretty much, it's pretty close to nothing.
But I mean, one of the differences there is, right, is like alcohol is a stimulant, or a stimulant, a depressant, right? In other words, it, it depresses your ability to react, respond and do that sort of thing. Now, I don't mean to sit here, because I am not a regular user of marijuana, right? And I'm just, I'm only saying, I, I like policies to be grounded in fact rather than fear. That make sense?
So you know, you're telling me then that recreational marijuana, then it's all right, then get behind the wheel, no?
I'm saying, I don't have that research, which is why I was saying, I don't know. I'm saying, I've never, I've never seen anything that, that supports or, or, or goes against the fact that it's.
Medical art recreational act.
I, I, I don't have that answer, again, I don't know.
I think at the end of the day, I, I don't necessarily disagree with the point that we split, at the end of the day, I don't know if it's necessarily a research issue as much as what is our insurance company gonna say?
Right.
Well, presumably, they'll follow the research.
Presumably, but I mean, we have to work with, with EndorF and see how EndorF is gonna be working their policies on that too, because I think that's the most important portion of it. Because, I guess from my mind, I'm not a lawyer, obviously, but I always think from a liability standpoint. If something were to happen, we need to make sure that, one, we're covered, two, if, if there is an accident, the people that get in the accident are covered, so that we, we wanna make sure that we're, we're safe and that we do things the correct way.
One thing we want with this policy then is contact the insurance company to see what they want us to do and see whether we're covered.
Yeah.
I, I would absolutely agree with that.
Yeah, and I, I, I don't know about the data, and, and hopefully the insurance company, obviously, whoever, you know, EndorF's looking into that, I'm sure they, they wanna make sure their policies are sustainable and that they, they're treating everyone fairly too, but at the same point, we need to make sure that we're covered that way, you know, so that. And we wanna be fair to our employees too, because I mean, the state voted, made a decision that medicinal marijuana was, was legal and it's a usable substance, so we wanna make sure that if it's something that can help one of our employees, that they can utilize it. So it's, it's, you know, we have to make sure it goes from both sides. So, in other words, I just wanted to start the discussion, so you had some guidance from us before you put the policy together, so when you bring it next time, we're not like, you know, where are we even starting at, you know?
One of the big things is why the insurance company wants us to do it.
Yeah, and I did speak to them a while back and they weren't so much concerned on having it. So, basically, they're saying the safety sensitive positions, of course, need the drug and alcohol testing or C D L. Um, however, like, not so much that somebody's gonna go drive a county car, but their main concern was, um, when somebody's driving their personal vehicle, what type of insurance coverage they have on their vehicle, because if they don't have insurance or if they have a really minimal, um, policy. Yeah, then the county's picking up the remainder of it that they can't cover. So that was their main concern and.
You're saying if they're driving their personal car for county business?
County business, yeah, correct, yeah.
For some reason, if they had to go to a conference or something.
Right, and then finally then, that's what the majority of county employees do is to take their own personal vehicle. And he said, a lot of businesses, what they'll do is they have a form that they have an employee complete each year.
And it's a waiver.
Yeah.
We should do that.
That might be reasonable anyway, simply because, you know, we don't know if our employees have just liability or cop collision or whatever, you know, like you said, and we're probably liable over the top if an accident were to occur, something to look at at least. I didn't know we were gonna get into this discussion.
Sorry, neither.
Oh, that's okay, actually, you brought it up, but I was actually thinking about it when I heard a news report the other day on the radio, thinking about, we should probably look at that policy sometime, you've heard it.
But that's all I have.
Okay, any further questions for Crystal? I think, no, thank you, Crystal, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're already at the eight-thirty. Janet Sanford and, and Brent Bogart from the load pass are gonna be here at nine o'clock, so we got, are they here? Well, there you go.
Are you ready for us?
You're ready, come on. You're right on time.
We have, uh, our point if you want.
We better get our R T out, otherwise I'm gonna screw it up.
He'll be right here.
Yeah, our East, we see that guy.
Sounds good.
Where did you guys come in from?
We actually came in last night for good marks.
You came in last night, okay, well, we appreciate you coming, uh, we love you guys.
We appreciate you having us. If you have some hands and knees on.
Do we have sticky notes? I can always, I can always use sticky notes, thank you.
How do you want it? I can either plug in or. Most of them are like little cheater.
Yeah. You're pretty familiar with it.
Yeah.
I mean, we've talked about this in the past a little bit, about something maybe we could look at it, but it'll be good to have the information out, and everybody will know the nation, so you guys can at least talk about it. It's been draft for about six weeks, we passed it on, every sixth day, we were. Okay.
Are we ready to roll?
We are ready.
I'm Janet Sanford, uh, I do the day-to-day operations of the Load Pass system, my team and I. And we work for Western Dakota Energy Association, which used to be North Dakota Association of Oil and Gas Producing Counties. And, um, our system used to just be in western North Dakota. We now are spreading out throughout the state and we'll get into that a little more. This is Red Bogart, he works with us as well. And so we'll give you a little bit of history on our system and tell you a little bit about it and answer any questions you might have.
As Janet said, um, system is now called Load Pass permits, we actually rebranded that a couple of years ago. It was the North Dakota Association of Oil and Gas Producing Counties overweight, overdimensioned permit system. Load Pass is a lot easier to say. So, um, it is a uniform system for permitting overweight and oversized loads on the county, township, and city roadways. Uh, obviously, the state does their own permitting. These are for, for the most part, and we'll get into this when we get into the, the types of permits, but mostly for non-divisible loads. Regarding, this is the map, most recent map of our counties, so the dark red counties are the original counties of the Load Pass system. Emmons County has been on the system the longest, of an outside oil county, so they, they actually approached us before we had considered expanding, and that's why they're in the dark red. The counties in the, I guess you call it pink, those are all counties that have signed on in the last two years. The newest ones, Richland and Sargent down in the southeast, they just voted to join the system, they will be going live on the system January first of next year. And then the yellow counties are all counties that, uh, we have presented to on the system that have expressed interest. I always like to point out Cass County, uh, they are interested in the system, but we have to work with them because they are the only county, they have a thirty-page county ordinance for their permit system. Which is, um, typical of Cass County, I'm finding that they always have to go a little bit more over the top than others. And so Jason, their county engineer, is working with us, they do wanna be part of the permit system, so, um, we're hoping we can get that done in the next, uh, six months or so. It was started in the nineteen eighties by the oil and gas counties, uh, for those non-divisible loads. It began really just as a informational sharing type of thing for, between the counties during the nineteen eighties, late seventies, early eighties oil activity. Uh, they had different rules and all of that, but they wanted to be able to communicate a little bit more. Then in the nineties, they actually said, let's make this uniform between the counties so that everyone is doing the same thing out there. Then in, uh, at that time, it was a paper permit system, so the truck, truckers basically had the permits in their trucks, they would fill out that permit and send it in. Um, so it was really an honor system. In two thousand ten, uh, the E permit system was built so that they could get by the permits online. And we ran both of those systems concurrently for the next five years, and then in two thousand fifteen, paper permits were discontinued, so everything had to be that E permit purchased online. We thought there might be a little bit more pushback from the industry, there was not much at all. Janet can tell stories, basically, a couple mom-and-pop type truck outfits were having issues, and they'd call in and like, you got a kid around that could help you get on the computer, and boom, problem solved. Two thousand sixteen, with the activity getting really busy, we added A C H payment options, uh, because some of the permits get quite large and credit cards didn't necessarily always, uh, have the limit, so companies can pay by A C H. Then we, in two thousand sixteen, the association did vote to expand all of North Dakota counties, counties. Um, it was just the oil and gas counties, and they said, we were getting approached by some other counties, and we said, yeah, really, the system can work for all counties, so they voted to do that. We, um, amended, created bylaws just for the permit system, so it's its own entity. So there is, um, a board, Load Pass Board, every member county has two members on the advisory board. A county commissioner or designee, and then the sheriff or designee. And a lot of times you'll see the sheriff and then like the county engineer will be designated by the county commission in that regards. Uh, two thousand fifteen legislative session was a huge, um, thing for us in the passage of House Bill thirteen twenty. The five-day signage waiver, we say that's, that's probably the biggest win, uh, that Load Pass has gotten legislatively. Because before this, if you had a restriction or needed to close a road, you had to go out and sign, you have to sign that road before you can do any enforcement on that road. If the road was not signed and someone was on that road and you pulled them over, you could not issue them a fine because it wasn't signed. Now you have five days if you've notified the public, which can be done through website posting, email, any type of notification, you have five days to get those signs out there. So that's a huge thing, uh, with our permit system that you have. And then it does require township participation. So, and by that, that doesn't necessarily mean the townships have to all be, um, managing permits on their roads. It means if the townships want their roads to be permitted, they need to be part of that, of the uniform system. So say Ramsey County signed on to the system, all the townships in Ramsey County would have to follow the permit system. They can't do their own thing where it's like, oh, I go to Ramsey County and get my permit, but I'm on this township, now I gotta call that township guy to get, get a different permit. It has to be part of the same permit system. And then we talked about the rebranding. So what is the benefit of Load Pass? Is uniformity across county lines for the government and, um, industry. This is huge for a lot of industry because a lot of times they're going back and forth across counties and they're not necessarily on the state highways. And so they have a one-stop shop where they can go and they can get that permit, and it works all across all of the counties that are part of it. So if I'm in, um, I'll use western North Dakota, Divide County, I can go from Divide County to Burke County to Ward County. And have, if that's all on county roads for some reason, um, and there's issues on that, that's a whole different rabbit trail that I could tell stories on. But if you're going across three county lines and it's all on county roads, that company only has to go one place to buy that permit. And the counties, the system figures out the fee for each county and distributes the money to the counties appropriately. So that single point of contact is huge. Manage your traffic using a color-coded system and in a dashboard. As a county, your, your staff will have a dashboard where they can manage the permits, they'll see the permits, manage their roads. It's a very intuitive and user-friendly interface to keep track of, um, the permit activity that's happening. You do retain control of your local roads. If you join the system, all's we are is we administer a permit system. We do not make the decisions on what your weights are on your roads, which roads you have restrictions on, any of those types of things, that is all still a local decision. You do potentially, depending if you have a permit system or not, uh, we've been to a number of counties that did not have any permitting system. So obviously, if you implement a permit system, there is some increase in revenues for road maintenance. You do reduce office staff traffic because they're going to our website to buy those permits, and if they have an issue, they're calling Janet's team with those issues instead of calling your staff. As a county, you receive your permit money once a month as an A C H direct deposit. And so you will get that money, um, you don't have to administer all that and keep track of the accounting. You get a report of all of the activity in your, um, county. And then obviously preparing for those future projects, you can see just a list, there are pipelines, wind farms, oil and gas, construction, ag, um, any type of major industry that is running truck traffic. Whether they're here now or potentially coming. So what we ask of you as a county is that you designate a contact person during business hours for the permit system. We try to, we wanna be customer, uh, focused, so if someone submits a permit at nine o'clock in the morning, we don't want them to have to wait till four thirty that afternoon before it gets approved. You know, during business hours, we want, we'd like to see someone within the county approving those within one to two hours. Um, Janet, if you wanna maybe talk about the automation of the system?
There, in our system, we have the ability for you to customize it. You can, uh, tell our system that you want to approve all permits. If any permit request that comes through, you want to approve it and review it. Or you can set it at different levels, you can set it at, uh, one oh five five and above. You can set the, 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 uh, limit at one twenty-nine, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand pounds and above, and you can set the limit at a hundred and fifty thousand pounds and above. In fact, all of the hundred and fifty thousand pounds and above permits will come to you, we don't let you turn that one off. So, because we don't wanna send a truck over your roads that heavy. And then in, in addition, any, uh, permit that's requested to go over a road that's been weight restricted down will come to you for approval. So if you set those approval levels at the, you know, one twenty-nine or the one fifty, you probably won't see a lot of the permits, they'll be auto-approved as you go through. So it's really up to your counties, and we have counties on every level of that. Many of our counties out west, there's so much traffic, they look at all of them, and there are thousands a month for them. But, um, you know, you'll, you'll be able to do and customize it the way you would like to customize it.
So that's, that makes it a little bit easier on staff if you can designate, you know, um, use that one twenty-nine threshold. Anything below a hundred and twenty-nine thousand pounds is auto-approved, you're not, your staff doesn't have to deal with those unless it's going on a restricted road, then you would still see those. And we like to, we also ask that, as a responsibility, kind of the same thing on the weekends, and not, not necessarily the same, um, level of one to two hours all weekend, but at least checking. And the way the system is, is it sends an email and a notification to, to the designated staff. So if they've got a smartphone or whatever, they're gonna get an email that there's that permit. It's not like they've gotta log in three times a day over the weekend to check to see if there's something there, there is a notification system. And then within that email is actually a link that they just click on and it takes them right to the approval page. So, fairly easy, um, from that standpoint. What it costs to get on the system is a, there's a fifteen hundred dollar initial fee. That's to do the setup and training of your staff and getting you integrated into our system. We take, we will take all of your county roads and add them to our map system. And so that's a little bit, depending on some counties, it's been very easy, some difficult. Uh, but we do, we actually have our own G I S server and pull in all of the information for the county roads and maintain that.
One question I have, do you go through D E S for your emergency management system? Through the Department of Emergency Services through the state, or do you handle your own? Do you know?
For sure, it's through the state.
Okay, then that is the base map that we use, so if it's through the state, your base map is going to be much more, um.
Easy to enter.
Yeah, we, we can pull it in very easily, and then we have you take a look at it and make sure everything is good before we start it.
So after the first year, then it's, the, uh, the fee for the system is based on the permit activity, and it's here as you can see. So if you don't have a lot of activity, it's five hundred dollars a year. And then we did, do have a cap on the high end as well, so if you've got a lot of activity, it's not, doesn't continually go up and up and up. Types of permits, we've, this is one of the things that constantly changes within our system, driven by the counties that are members of this. So we have a number of permits that we have added over the years, it used to just be a trip permit, the restricted roads. Uh, we traded the excess permit for those loads that are over a hundred and fifty thousand pounds. So like the restricted road and excess permit, those get pretty expensive for industry. Five ton, five bucks per ton per mile, um, you know, you're running a hundred and eighty thousand pound load down a restricted road, it's gonna cost the industry some money to get that done.
And I do have copies of our fee schedule if any of you would like a hard copy of that.
Couple of other permits. Earlier I talked about primarily divisible load, we do have a couple of permits that work for, um, for non-divisible loads. We do have a couple of permits that are for divisible loads, the harvest permit and the winter time permit. Those two permits follow the state's permit system of during harvest season, the ten percent over during winter, ten percent over. So those, um, those work for divisible load, uh, but everything else is non-divisible. The annual over width, um, and then the frost law permit, probably not a huge thing, um, in your county. This was actually something that the industry out west requested during frost law season, obviously roads get really restricted down, and they asked, is there some way we can do this? They originally went to Williams County, Williams County came up with this frost law permit, so it's a thousand bucks per truck, um, for the industry, and they pay that if they want. And then the counties can choose if they wanna offer this permit. You don't even have to offer this permit, but if you do, say, again, going out west, because you got Williams County and right next to them is Montreal County, both of those counties offered that. They're gonna have to pay that thousand dollars per county, so it'd be two thousand bucks per truck for those, uh, companies.
That's long, what, seven tons, however they want, however the county wants to set it up like.
It's actually set at seven, they can drive seven ton on a six-ton road.
So if it was a seven-ton road, they can do eight-ton.
Not necessarily, but if that was something that you wanted, we can talk about adding that. Right now, it's, it's hard to make that seven.
Seven tons six.
Baby, help me out.
Or six.
What are you getting for the thousand bucks?
Basically, one, one truck for the frost season, so basically, let's just say from March to May. They're gonna pay that thousand dollars per truck, and then they can run seven ton on a six-ton road.
As many tons as they want?
Yep.
For that one?
Yep.
You'd get it for ten thousand pounds on a semi then, regular five.
That would've been the decision we'd have made last spring with Roarkville, right?
Yeah.
So, uh.
We didn't start.
Do, do you have some six-ten roads during frost season? Yeah, some counties go down only to seven tons, so they don't need to use this, but the counties that go down to six-ten on some of their roads, this is an option.
And one of the reasons the industry drove this is if, not sure how familiar you are with the oil and gas industry, but a couple of trucks like, um, hot oil trucks, which they have to get out on sites. That truck weighs over, right around seven, they cannot take anything off of it, and they couldn't operate, they can't even move those vehicles then. And so that's really where this was driven by the industry, and they're like, we'll pay for it because we gotta get, otherwise we can't, the well's not gonna work. And so that, that was, um, really how that was driven there. As Janet said, this is our fee schedule, so there is a graduated fees for those overweight, um, you know, eighty thousand to the one fifty, um, the ton per mile. Couple of different fixed fees for earth-moving equipment and workover rigs and cranes. Uh, the cranes becomes a big thing even outside of the oil industry, if you've got wind farms or power line construction, uh, the cranes, uh, play into effect there. And then the restricted, we talked about the restricted and excess permits. Drilling rig move permits, another permit, um, you don't have any drilling rigs this far east, so not, not an issue, but, uh, there is, um, that was something that the oil counties, they wanted to be able to track when and where those rigs were moving so that they could plan accordingly. So this is our activity, um, so you can see last year, uh, we did over a hun, almost a hundred and ten thousand permits. Our busiest year was fiscal year twelve and thirteen at a hundred and, almost a hundred and seventeen thousand permits. Really kind of follows with the price of oil as things moved up and down widely. Really kind of follows with the price of oil as things moved up and down, why, why it dipped down there in fifteen, when the oil price dropped and now activities come back. But we're also seeing more steady growth as you see, as we continue to add more and more counties. It's going to smooth out those trend lines a little bit because it's not just driven by the oil industry. This is the revenue collected, so that this, just kind of an example, the top two lines, McKenzie and Williams County. Obviously the two busiest counties in regards to the oil industry. So huge amounts of fee activity there.
So what, county goes out oil, and what would there be?
So what I like to point, I'm going to step up here so you can see, pointer doesn't work on the TV. I like to point out this line right here. This is Stark County, this blue, uh, kind of brownish line and wearing spikes there. So Stark County technically is an oil county, but there's no logging activity there. So they don't really have any oil, um, activity, so to speak, related to development. That spike was when the wind farm went into Stark County. So, um, untypical in non-oil counties, probably, you know, we've got counties as low as, you know, three thousand dollars to, you know, you can see even some of the non-oil counties, they're like, Ward County is not an oil county. And they receive about, I think it's around seventy thousand dollars a year in, in, uh, fees, revenue there.
Do you currently have any permit system at all?
Yes.
You do, so you, you've issued permits out of the courthouse?
Uh, the highway department, yeah.
Okay.
It's online.
Okay.
We talked about, this was one of our enhancements that we added in two thousand and twelve, a communication system for the permit system. This is where if you're on our permit system, we send out notifications to those that are subscribed. Uh, over thirteen thousand people subscribe now, now, right now. And so you can send out a notification about a closure or restriction. We do allow limited communication, um, notifications to go out. And by that, what I mean is, um, some of the counties will do like a, um, industry meeting once a year. And so we will allow them to communicate that through the notification system so that they can remind people that, hey, our meeting is coming up in January type of thing. So, uh, those can go out. This is, this is key, going back to that House Bill thirteen twenty in regards to those closures. Because if you send out the notification through this system and that road's restricted and someone goes out there and they get stuck and you've got to go out there and pull them out and they got, they left fourteen inch ruts in your road, you have the ability to, to find them. And they'll sit there and they'll go, well, the road wasn't signed. And you're like, but we sent it out by notification. And we have had so far two cases where, um, counties have significant fines, five-figure fines to, to a truck. And they have, the companies have said, we're going to fight this in court. And they call us and we can go back and we have an audit trail. And in both cases, we proved multiple people within the company have received a notification. They dropped the fight and just paid the fine. So that is a huge benefit. As, as an IT techie guy, I actually argue that this, this right here is almost worth the cost of admission, being able to send that notification out and having, not having to do the five-day signage.
This is like a case of, they got seventeen inches of rain in one little area.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
For that particular road.
Shut it down and send out that notification and you can't get out there quite yet to sign. And you, you know, obviously if you know it's going to be shut down for a long time, you still want to get out there and sign it. But you get that huge rainfall, it's like, I need to close this right away. I can send out that notification. And the next day I can get a county, county guy, road guy out there to put some signs up, but I need it shut down now.
And this system is free to the user. They just have to sign up.
Yep.
They don't have to pay anything.
What would that sign up for the county, fifteen hundred bucks? Is that what you said? And then, what's our additional cost would be what?
Like subsequent years, the second year, we base it on the number of permits that were sold on behalf of your county the year before. And most of the non-oil counties are within that, under that five, five hundred, so it would be five hundred dollars.
This, this would be very beneficial to the truckers also. We're not trying to penalize truckers.
That's what we hear from the truckers.
A trucker that wants to pull down a road and drop it in.
Yep.
No.
You know, what's it going to cost them to get out?
Yep.
Right?
What damage is he going to do to his truck?
Well, we.
I mean, I mean, we're not penalizing farmers.
No.
You know, we're, you know, we're trying to educate people on what roads they should travel. Yeah, this is probably very beneficial that way.
And we've actually.
What do you think, Kevin?
Yeah, this is a divisible load, so like, you know, like a big tractor, for instance, or a big loader or something, not, not grain where you can divide the load, that type of thing. So yeah, it's, it's not penalizing the farmers.
No.
No, it's not. I mean, it's, like I said, I, I don't know if a trucker wants to get stuck.
No.
Because it's going to cost them a damn lot of money.
This is huge for that.
This is, this is huge for that.
Saved the roads out west. It, they were absolutely.
Saved the truckers too?
And the truckers.
Yep.
They don't know where they're at.
We've had counties.
They follow GPS.
Yep.
We've had counties that trucking.
They think the long term.
The trucking, trucking companies have come to the county and said, why aren't you on load pass? Because we know how to run that. We know what we're doing in there. And we want to be able to get our permits all in one place.
Yep.
And.
I don't know how many out-of-area truckers come into Ramsey County trying to deliver something. I, I mean, I have no idea.
You'd be surprised.
There's more than we think, probably.
I would guess mostly would be equipment, things like that, go over, over the road.
And they're from who knows where. And like I said, they're using GPS to get where they're going. And all they got to do is take one wrong ground load and, and, oh my God, here.
Yep.
A good example is these, uh, units that are putting in drain tiles, the plows for them, drain tiles?
Yes.
Over, or.
Kevin?
A lot of those.
Do you, uh, Kevin, do you have a rough estimate of how many permits we issue a year?
Yes, it's like under, um, what is it, five hundred? We're probably get a hundred a year, maybe the most. My, my biggest question with this, and I'll admit it, is the sign-up fee was five, fifteen hundred dollars. And I thought, well, how are we ever going to recoup that? But after seeing what we bring in for permits, I mean, we've sold two thousand dollar permits. So it wouldn't take long to recoup that.
I think, very, like I said, very beneficial to out-of-area truckers, you know.
We could recoup it fairly easily, I think.
Yeah.
And then we would take it off your plate, other than you'd have to just approve the permits.
My, one of my biggest questions is, let's say we sold that two thousand dollar permit for all county roads, how much of that revenue do we get back and how much do you keep?
Yep. So on the revenue, there's, there's a couple of things on a permit. So every permit the industry, uh, company buys, there's the, the permit fee. There's a six dollar administration fee that they pay. That's what supports the load pass. So, um, we used to say, and I say we used to say because there's a, there was a change a couple of years ago that I'll explain, that a hundred percent of the permit revenue actually came back to the county. So that two thousand dollars would come back to the county. A few years ago, uh, the, the counties said, we need to do, we need to, um, make some investment in this system. And that's where we implemented our GIS map. And so that's a routable map, and we'll get into that here in a little bit. But I just want, since you asked the question, we'll hop around here a little. Is the county said, um, hold back a percentage of our revenue to pay for this, this GIS system and this routable map. So we now hold back, is it one and a half?
One and a half percent.
One and a half percent. So out of that two thousand dollars, you're going to lose one and a half percent. So what would that be, um, fifty bucks? So, um, fairly, fairly minimal for, for the maintenance of the system. So, um, and, and that's a great question because that, that, that is a concern. If you've already got a permit system and you're generating revenue, are you, are you going to go backwards? Are you going to go forwards? Are you going to be held harmless, so to speak? This, this here is just that, we do have samples of agreements to work with your townships. Because a lot of times, it's, you know, now, our history is with the oil counties. And a lot of the oil counties do not have organized townships. And so it was not an issue. Um, McKenzie County only has twelve townships organized. The rest of it's unorganized. Dunn County, Stark County, a hundred percent unorganized. Billings County, a hundred percent unorganized. So they are, the county maintains all of their roads.
Burley County, are they organized?
Burley County is organized. So, um, Williams County is about half and half organized, unorganized. So it's, it's interesting if you, I was just at the township officers meeting in Bismarck yesterday. And when they pull up the map, the, basically it's not organized in the, um, west and it gets all organized as you go east. So it's.
That's where people settle.
Yep.
Not people to settle, put a township together, put a board together.
Yep.
Otherwise, you just have to have a lot of people out there for all the boards. Yeah, that's right.
But it does give the townships a chance to earn a little permit money too. But what we tell you is it's a, an agreement between you and your township. You can set it up any way you want. But typically what we're seeing in most counties is the county will share the, the permit revenue. And we give you reports that can pull out all the township revenues. And they share it at like a seventy-five, twenty-five. The township gets seventy-five percent of their own township revenue. You keep twenty-five percent for the administration of the permit system. That's typically what it is, but you can do whatever you want.
So when you sell a permit, so let's say there's ten miles on county road and ten miles on township road, you don't split that out on your reports?
We do.
But you get all the money. The county gets all the money. We don't send directly to townships. If you, it's up to you.
We do if we want.
You can. And we give you the numbers if you want to break those out.
Well, the way you put this program across, it seems to me the first thing, you know, the perception, what the perception is going to be to the people in Ramsey County is that the county commission is going after the farmers. And I don't want that perception out there at all. Because I don't feel that's what they're doing. We're already, you know, asking for permits from the farmers in Ramsey County. But I can see out-of-the-area truckers, like I said before, would be very appreciative of a system like this. And they can look at a map and say, okay, I'm not going down that road, it's restricted. Or I'm going down this road, this is the one I'm supposed to be on. And if they look at the GPS rate, they'll know they're on the right road. That's what we should try to help.
That's huge.
And for fifteen hundred dollars, I think that would be a very good system for Ramsey County. And I can't believe there wouldn't be a number of other counties around us that would follow. We see no other counties around us either.
We have that harvest permit and we have, uh, just implemented that in the last couple of years. But it came from the farmers. Farmers came forward to their counties that were members and said, you know, we buy the state permit, harvest permit, and we get to the, the county road and we're not complying. So the state permit doesn't work on the county road. We would like you to have a permit like the state. So that's why we actually implemented that, because it came from the farmers wanting to comply on county roads.
I think in the past, we've had a lot of farmers that have a state permit, they drive across the county road not knowing that it doesn't qualify for the county.
Right, and that's what we were hearing.
We've allowed them now to do that. But I think it would make sense if we at least got a slight cut of revenue being or using our roadways to get to the state highway system.
Right.
So for, what'd you say, fifty bucks a month?
Right.
I think that's pretty reasonable.
But we still, there's only one person approving permits. So if they're traveling on a township road, we're approving the, this, just say it with me. We're approving permission for them to travel on those township roads, right?
Yeah. And that's part of your township agreement that you would work with. You know, um, some townships are like, have at it. We don't, I don't want those phone calls, even in the oil counties, we had certain townships that were like, phew, I'm tired. You know, because it's, you know, your township, it's going to be the local farmer, basically, right? And so he's like, I'm tired of getting these phone calls at eight o'clock at night about getting a permit and stuff. So the county's going to approve, we'll sign off and you guys just manage it all for us. And then we have some townships that still say, we want to review, we want to know. And so then, um, we have their contact information. We publish that on the website so that the industry knows that they have to contact that township.
Yeah, our system handles either way.
Yeah, you, you, that's one way that you can get them to go onto your system is just like, just know that your phone number is going to be published on the website so people can call you. But, and it gets difficult. I mean, I, I just know some of the townships that I had to deal with in stuff was, they go south for the winter, so they're down in Arizona and they're getting these phone calls in November before, you know, and they're like, I'm not even there. And they want to ignore it and stuff. So it was, this makes it a lot easier. And so again, that's a, and, um, you know, we have a number of samples that we can provide in regards to how to communicate to townships. To your point about the farmers too, we can help provide materials to send out. We just, we talked about this actually with, uh, Sergeant in Richland County of, um, helping them. They do a mailer to all of, um, the, the farmers out there through the, the elevators. And, you know, they've got obviously a lot of beet traffic and stuff. And so we're going to help create basically, I'll call it a statement stuffer that explains the permit system to the end user. So they know that this isn't, this, we're not putting this in as a gotcha. This is a, this is to help maintain the integrity of our road system and just to make sure that people are following the rules. Couple of enhancements that we want to touch on for you so you understand more of what we've invested for the system is a routable road network. We talked about that and that came out in, um, that was a map where you could go out to our website and you can just, you can zoom into the county, down to the county and township road level. And you would see the restrictions and you can click on the road and it will tell you, this road is restricted to seven ton. And we maintain all of that. So you notify, if you want to put a restriction on, you send a notification into Janet's team and we maintain that map. All you've got to do is let us know and we maintain it. And we keep track of the notifications that go out through the notification system. So if you happen to put in a notification, but you didn't let us know, we're like, oh, they sent something out. We'll get, we'll get it taken, taken care of on the map.
What do you think of all this, Kevin? I think I, I've seen enough.
Yeah, I think it's a good deal. I think we need to definitely inform the township, so what's going on.
Absolutely. And that's what I was going to suggest to the commission is, let's have Kevin talk over some of the townships and we'll make a decision at the next meet.
You guys should be interested.
Or we can do it in January also.
Yeah, we, we've gone out, uh, I can come out and meet with, you know, like, some of our counties have an annual township meeting and stuff. Um, we've come out to the, we've gone to some of those meetings to explain the system and what it means for them. So they, they know that it's not a, you know, you're not trying to take over their roads because some townships get very possessive about that and some could care less. But, you know, just present it as factual so that they understand what it means for them.
What we've found is most townships are leery because change is hard and they're not clear on what this is going to mean. But once they get on it, they just go, wow, this is a win-win. Because they're getting a check every month that they weren't getting before. They're, they're, uh, taking care of their roads. They're, um, making sure that nothing is going over them that might damage them. And, um, it ends up being a win-win is what we're hearing.
Did you meet with the townships or we have to wait until March to sign this up?
I would send them a letter or something, just something like that.
How long does it take to enact the system if we make the decision to go on it?
Uh, probably the shortest amount of time we've done it in is about thirty days. But I would give it closer to forty-five to sixty so that you can get the word out to your users. Since you have a permit system, you have a mailing list so that you can send out a letter. Some, some, uh, counties do not have that mailing list. So they have to sort of go, you know, um, a blanket notification to everybody and anybody. And so it gets a little bit, uh, more difficult to get the word out, but you have a baseline.
Basically, you can choose your go-live date, like Richland County, they voted on it. And they said, let's wait till January one. They voted, I think that was in August. So, you know, they took almost a hundred days before they went live. You know, they said, when's a good start point? We don't want to start in the middle of beet harvest or something. January one's a good date. You know, considering this, this time of the year already, um, being into December and stuff. You know, you could say, we're going to wait until after frost law season to go, go live. Um, you know, so you, you, you can choose that date.
Or if you think you need it during frost law season, maybe February first and get going. Because then you could have a few weeks in before it hopefully would go on.
Yeah, it would give us some time for it. If we wanted to, you know, let the townships know, we can do it at the township meeting and then we can say, go live, you know, once we get done with restrictions or something like that. So maybe say June first or something like that. It would give us some time to at least have them in the loop and then go through the rest of the season the way we are currently. And then we could, we could do something if that's the decision you wanted to make. At least it would give us some time to think about what we want to do.
What you'd need to do, we'd need to do with you is, um, work with you on notifying your townships. Get your map baseline, um, base map reviewed by most likely Kevin. And make sure that we don't have any changes. And if we do, you can send them into DES and we'll get another monthly update from them. At the end of each month, we get an update from DES, um, with your changes on it. So that can push it back a month. And then, um, get the staff that we'll be working with it trained. And we usually do that online, train through go-to meeting and get you trained. And then we, we are ready to go. And then you'll be on the list. So if a company, we send out a notification through our notification system and say Ramsey County is now part of the permit. system and say, Ramsey County is now part of the permit system, and so when they go in and they say, I want to request this permit for these counties, your name will be on that list of counties. And so from then on, they can, they start by permits for Ramsey County.
Do we have any further questions?
I have one. On that map with all the colored, colored, uh...
Yep.
Counties?
Counties, what were the other colors of all, like there was a white?
Uh, no, go back here, just, um, so a couple of counties, we, there we go. So Sioux, Griggs and Stutsmann. Stutsmann has their own permit system and they basically, at this point, they have told us, we're, we're not interested and so we haven't done any presentation or anything to them, the same. Sioux County and Griggs, the same thing, they just have not expressed any interest. We've tried to reach out and their base, you know, they've just kinda ignored us.
I heard them do that.
And the Brown?
That's what the Brown, what's the Brown?
The Browns are counties that have expressed some interest, but we haven't been out to them to present yet. In fact, I think it was last year, cause you guys have a regional county group out here, correct?
Yeah.
And we were invited to come to that regional meeting and then it was one of those horrible blizzards and so I think the meeting got canceled or we, we at least couldn't make it, so.
Yeah, and that, and I, you know, I, I chair that and Dave from Towner County was one of the ones that was really interested in it, while they've gone on it now, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And it still might be something where we could knock out quite a few counties at the same time if you wanted to come back and do it then.
Yeah, yeah, we welcome that up.
We, we really like coming to the regional meetings because then some of the counties are in it and some are not, they can talk with each other, how's it working for you and it's, it's a, it's a good way to present it.
Okay, ready for the questions?
If I can, there's, this last slide is kind of, this is our routable map, it's just like Google Maps now for the industry, they put in their start point and endpoint and it routes them and will calculate the permit for them and everything and avoid restrictions. You can kinda see the different colored roads on there, that's the, the information, you know, whether the road's restricted or what the weight is on that road, so it's, there's a lot of information on that map.
Also the bridge, bridges all have information on the bridges, we're, we have the base on that, we just released this in August, so we have the base bridge information, but we're enhancing that now and working towards an automation for the bridges so that a truck that cannot go over that bridge will not be routed over it. And right now, it has to be, you know, reviewed, but we're working towards an automation for the bridges.
And Upper Great Plains Transportation Institute, they are a strong partner of ours with their grid system, we are in conversations constantly with them of how can, cause we wanna make it simple for the counties, that you're not inputting, have to go to grid and go to DES and go to us to input that information, let's have one point. These last three bullet points here though, I think are huge ones that we're working on, the big one is the law enforcement app, cause any permit system is only as good as the enforcement that you do on it, right? I mean, if, if you're never gonna pull a truck over, no one's ever gonna buy a permit. So we are working on a quick lookup and app for law enforcement that they can just put in that unit number, the plate number, you know, look it up and so they can see, oh, he's got a valid permit, okay. And then what we're, within that is basically gonna be a reporting system. If I'm the deputy, I pull a truck over, he's got a permit and it's valid, I just hit a green button and so we can track, cause industry's asked us to track who are the good, who are the good industry players? They wanna know because, again, we worked primarily, started with the oil and gas industry, you know, Hess doesn't haul its own crude oil, they're contracting that out to truck companies. They, but they're the ones that get lit up in the public when there's a problem, it's not the subcontractor. And so Hess and the oil industry specifically, that, give us a report of who are the good companies or who are the bad companies, cause we don't wanna work with the bad companies. And so we're gonna have this for law enforcement so they can quick lookup that permit validation. And then the end user app, you talked about the GPS, is we are working able to, this is a big one that won't happen right away, but it's to have basically that point-by-point navigation, turn-by-turn, just like, so if you've got your iPhone Series telling you, in two miles, turn left, so that they can stay on that, so. Any other questions?
No, I don't think so.
Alright, very much appreciate your time.
Yeah, we appreciate your company, thank you.
Thanks so much. This is a packet of information if you should decide to go with us, that's where we'll start. So I'll leave it with you, I can send that to you electronically or whatever, we're, we're in contact through email, so.
Okay.
Anybody else need a base schedule?
I'll have to get this one, that's on the, I will take a look at it.
There you go.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thanks so much.
I'm already ready to put your TV remote, just switch it back to you.
Alright, we'll be over.
Are you here?
Can I, your email address, Kevin?
Oh, a lot of stuff to talk about.
And if I have any questions for you, perfect. That's awesome.
There we go.
I'm gonna give it to you. I mean, it's probably gonna be a minute, but.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks so much. If you want, you can come up with any questions, that's it. I'll do this.
VJ.
Alright, thanks so much.
Yep.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay. Yep.
Well, that's all right, in the years ago, we did talk about roads. Uh, first of all, the bridge inspection on the Tripsis Ferry Bridge has been done, we don't have the results back yet. I think Lester mentioned to me that he did talk to the divers and the divers said they didn't see anything that jumped up, jumped out at them, but we'll still have to wait for the report back.
And they didn't freeze to death, really?
Yeah, so.
I, I, that's amazing that they went on.
It was a snowstorm.
They dove in the snowstorm.
But it's done, so that's.
Okay.
Um, and then I need to order carbide blades for three of our pound trucks. I did get the shipping charge done that night, so the total price was four thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirteen cents with shipping.
Okay. We need a motion to approve that?
Yeah.
We have a motion, a second, six to one, a second, god, yes, both motions, I guess pick them. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve by.
I'm ready to move on.
Everybody cut out, just further discussion, seeing none, uh, do we, roll call on this? We're not paying the bills, so all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries.
And then the John Deere rental tractors, he asked me to get different prices from other companies. Uh, first of all, John Deere's rate for that program is sixteen dollars and eighty-nine cents per hour on the tractors. Tweet, doesn't have the government rental program anymore, but they do rent, you know, like a regular rate for, and John told me it was like fifty dollars an hour, so. Ironhide, uh, Outcat doesn't have tractors that big and Cat gave me a quote today, or yesterday of nineteen dollars an hour.
How many motions do I have from John Deere?
Second. We have a motion and a second to go with John Deere, now that's sixteen eighty-nine, that's, that's the government rate that is quoted through the association counties.
Correct, yep, and that's for two hundred and fifty dollars. If we go over the two fifty, it goes up.
Yeah, we've never gotten over two fifty. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, going with rental tractors from John Deere again, further discussion?
Yeah, two of them.
Two tractors, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries.
And I guess the next one is just maybe put the thought in your head that they make these hay rakes for the front motor graders for like if a farmer was cutting ditches or something or whatever and the hay comes out on the road, it makes a terrible mess when it glades, so now they have these rakes with like three wheels on them that'll rake it off into the ditch. I've been calling around getting prices on those. Uh, the cheapest ones I can find, which are still good quality, is forty-five hundred dollars each. And our, they have a hydraulic cylinder that pushes them towards the ditch or back out so they're not hanging out in the traffic when you're dead end. And with our new, three new motor graders, we'll have that extra hydraulic bank up front that will do that. So I guess my thought there is I'd like to get at least three of them and then take them out loud, we could build the next three ourselves if it's something, what looks like we can do.
Easy to put on, take off?
Yeah, they hook to the front end, um, where the plow hooks on, so it's all got the same kinda hookups as the, so the plow automatically goes up and down, but now there'll be a hydraulic cylinder that goes sideways also, so it can go up further into the ditch.
Is Benson or Nelson use them?
Nelson's got them.
I think Walsh has them.
There is quite a few counties, there's a person in Walsh that's built one for like eighteen hundred dollars a piece, but. Yeah, I think maybe a good thing, I'd make a motion, I would go ahead and get the three for a motor grader.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, okay, further discussion?
So the total for that three wouldn't be thirteen fifty, just.
Okay, thirteen.
That's thirteen thousand five hundred, excuse me.
Okay, yeah, thirteen five hundred. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries.
Now I just wanted to bring you up, he's on next retirement, he does have a resignation letter here, uh, you guys want me to read this off?
I think we've all seen that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So anyway, we have already retired, or hired, advertised for his position and we hired, hired Jason Grab, he actually just moved up the position and, and, so now we're advertising for replacement of Jason. And that closes yesterday, yeah, it closed yesterday, so we actually haven't done any reviews or anything yet.
Good, interest in it?
A couple, maybe three or four now.
Three or four, okay. I love some candidate stuff, choose from that, that's good.
There's actually probably three of them, but I know, I haven't seen them all, anyway.
Okay, good.
So just to bring you up to speed there, what's going on?
Okay, anything further for Kevin?
Do you have a hire date that you're looking for hiring that Jason's replacement or? Uh, hopefully first year. Okay. Might not want to have to kind of unplug it, I don't want to plug it right now, but it just, it makes sense to me to start first year.
Yeah, just makes it clean, clean and easy.
Clean and easy.
Okay, very good, anything else, Kevin? Nope, that's it. Alright, there you go.
Okay. Oh, oh, yeah, Paul.
I was on a Ramsey County two project, they did comments, I was in DOT last week. I'm a real good corporate today for Ramsey two overlay and the pump's product for next year.
Yeah.
Let me ask you a question, I went down to Roberto, this fall, it was a combine, wow, it's getting narrow. Not Roberto, Webster, East of Webster, excuse me, East of Webster.
Mean eight?
Oh.
One of them is big.
Getting narrow.
Yeah, yeah, that was the last one, the old lady who fit on it, with that white.
Highway two could end up like this?
Uh, it's a little bit wider, but not much, maybe two feet.
Twenty-four, twenty-four foot is the road, is the standard road type and that's what we ended up with. And all the last one, all the ones we've done lately.
It's possible to widen those, but man, does that have the cost of that project.
So this'll, this'll be, this'll be the last lift and then we're gonna have to widen after that.
Exactly, my predecessor will probably have to work on a wide one.
A lot of East of Webster, yeah.
Oh, all of them, probably, if you can think of it that way, it's probably gonna be all of them.
So there's gonna be a lot more cost on the next lift, of course, that's, you know, won't be able to step it in over time, but.
What's the wheelbase on that new combine?
Well, this one, you already knew, I mean, that's pretty old, but, I mean, it was, you met somebody, you stopped.
It's fairly standard.
There was ice down on the shore, out in the grass.
If you're doing dulp, if you put those on it, you're probably fifteen feet at least.
At least.
Yeah, cause I think, I think I stepped ours off, we've got singles and it's about fourteen, so by the time you put some duals on it, you're probably sixteen, sixteen.
Seventeen.
They usually try to find an approach, hit the wheels.
Yeah, you're pretty much.
Probably can get leaned over.
But like I said, there was snow and ice down the shoulders.
Oh.
We didn't wanna, sometimes you drop down the grass or anything, alright.
It gets a little treacherous.
Yeah, all, all the roads.
I didn't like that when it stretched the road, I know that.
Yeah, all over lanes that we've done in the last five, six years or whatever, they're, they're pretty well maxed out for weight.
Yeah, once everywhere like above, the incline starts to get really steep too, so once you try to get off the edge of the road, it gets, you know, a little nerve wracking.
Well, then you gotta think that if you wanna make that shoulder two feet wider, let's just say two feet, now you gotta have all that dirt, but even slopes, we gotta improve the slopes to do it and slopes aren't what they're supposed to be, so, yeah, big dollars.
It's getting expensive.
And then even the wetland and banks, all that stuff too with gates.
What's that, somebody twenty years from now deal with that?
Well, maybe with the go-for-money money.
Well, I don't know, the state's been doing this in Mill and Phil, maybe they built off dimensions and put two back on a lot of times.
That might be a non-intimate, too, which would market.
I've heard of Big Ten, but that is a problem.
So not either, cause you're not, you know.
Take two, take two inches off and then put two inches back on, I mean, that, that doesn't widen your road that way.
Just basically money, just basically.
That's the same money, but you're taking away from your base, I mean, you might as well have left it out there, it's out of your strength.
And that's what underneath is still aging, so.
That's the only thing, you're taking away your strength, you don't gain nothing as far as strength.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for Kevin? Okay, very good, thanks guys. Okay, new business, uh, committee, or for at least affirmative leases for mills like Basin Park Board, School and Sheriff's House Committee for the Sheriff's.
Move just a little.
There are motion to approve.
Second.
And a second on all of those, further discussion, they're all pretty standard, so. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Uh, joint powers agreement for human resource with Catwater County as well as District Health, just a.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Further discussion, just to re-up what we've had before, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Meeting dates for next year.
Election group.
We have a motion, second. Second, sorry, I didn't hear. Okay, we have a motion and a second, Almar on Tuesdays except for that one Thursday because it is election day on the third.
Yes.
Actually looked that up last night, what's going on November third?
November is the third, or it's the Thursday.
Yeah, November third's the first Tuesday of the month, so it'll be election day twenty twenty, so to save, to save candy sanity, we'll go on Thursday for it. Okay, we have a motion and a second, no discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Raffle permit?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the raffle permits, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Visitors and delegations? Nobody, nobody wants to speak now. Okay, portfolios, Commissioner Wigfield, this is okay?
I actually don't have a county thing to report.
Oh, that's.
It's that quiet time of the year where not a whole lot's going on.
Yeah, states get it open for Christmas. Okay, yeah.
Report on a law enforcement center, we had a very good meeting with the BIA people from Aberdeen last time we met, which was a few weeks ago, Monday or whatever, went very well. They, they brought in sixteen more prisoners for us, or they chopped it up to twenty or
They, they brought in sixteen more prisoners for us, so they shoved it up to twenty or so we have with BIAs. And Federals, we have, oh, Emily's here.
Emily's here, yeah.
What do we have for BIAs now, Emily? Do you know?
Six.
Six now? Okay.
In and out.
And then Federals are what?
Ten.
Ten, okay. But the BIA was a lot larger than that. Yeah. But the meeting with the BIA went very well, very well. Didn't it Emily?
Yes.
Yeah. And there's an outstanding balance there with them and they have a solution on how they're gonna take care of that. And we made it very plain to them that we were interested in doing business with them. And like I said, they brought a gentleman and a lady and it was a very good meeting with them. I thought it went very well. Intercom and camera systems, you know what they wanted to do. Anything else?
Counties are way up.
Locally.
Yeah, counties are way up. Must be what today, yesterday?
Yesterday was seventy-five.
And today I talked to Robert with eighty. So it's.
In, in need of what the BIA people, did they say what the holdup was on why they can't pay on time? Does it have to do with their just, their budget allotment is run up or they're just slow or?
One of the gentlemen, do you remember his name? The one that leader, the first one to talk. I can't remember. But he, he's new. He came from New Mexico and, you know, and then the other gentleman, he was, been there quite a while. But they, just the programs, the way they're set up and had a change of the accounting services in one area in Washington and that was a problem.
Well, sometimes they hit, you know, they hit the budget cap and then they gotta wait for the next continuing resolution before they can cut a check. It's always like they're a few months behind. And you're gonna do a new CR here before Christmas.
And they offered the information that, you know, we can charge them interest and I don't think we decided what to do there yet, so.
I think they said they would pay it no matter dangers, no matter what.
Yeah, they're gonna pay their back bill. It's just, they're always a few months behind.
But we made it very plain to them that we wanted to do business with them. I know Rock called me that one day. I think it was sixteen they brought in.
They were supposed to.
Substantial, more.
Yeah.
Good deal. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, Jeff?
Well, we're in for a go. Airport Authority, we had a meeting, what was it, a week ago? We, you know, our work I do for John's replacement manager out there. We ended up, I think, with eight applicants, narrowed it down to four. We'll interview those Monday, the ninth. And hopefully we can make a decision, make an offer from there. And so have somebody come on board and look at around that first year type of timeframe. Josh chat with John a little bit and, and go from there kind of thing. And, you know, I think the candidates we got were really high quality and, and so it's gonna be a tough decision.
Well, it's always good when it's a tough decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, anything else?
I think Fair Board meets tonight. I won't be able to be there. We'll be in Bismarck the rest of the week for a water convention. We'll be giving out our Water Stewardship Award, Lake Access Committee, as I mentioned, Mayor Johnson will be down there. To attend the Water Commission meeting the following morning and he'll accept the award on behalf of the Lake Access Committee. Other than that, busy?
Yeah, okay. Mark?
Hi, Lucas. Basically, everybody, everything's been touched. So everything covered.
Okay.
Heard about the LACs.
From my perspective, we've got last Social Services Board meeting for our district. Come back pretty quick. I think it's next week. I'm not totally sure at all. So the, the.
Two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks maybe. The Zone will go live January first. Rhonda is our interim director. So once we go live, we will be, we'll have to open up for permanent director. So we'll keep you apprised of that when that starts to happen. Trying to think anywhere else. For Devils Lake, we meet, we're not meeting this week. So we'll do that committee in a couple of weeks here. Our last full board meeting, we had to cancel because that was the day that the storm came in and the roads were bad. County housing authority, nothing too crazy there. We reset rent rates, everything like that. Occupancy has been fairly decent. I've got to get units flipped over quicker. Yeah, I'm thinking crazy. So that's all I've got. Anything else? You're the goodest one.
State Fair Association, I didn't go down to that.
You didn't make it?
It was the same day as the storm.
Yeah. It's that time of year. Travel always gets interesting, so. The roads out in the county are now in pretty good shape. We got a little bit of sunlight to get them knocked off and they're driving over. And so everything looks pretty good now. Just took a while. Once we got that, that heavy blanket of snow on there, they're gonna get it knocked off. So did a good job scraping it, but it always takes time. I'm just glad we don't have to drive on it all winter as long as we, nothing crazy happens.
Some of the gravel roads are a little bit like that.
Yeah.
People drive.
Gravel gets packed down and then you can't get that snow off of there. So just how it is. Okay, seeing nothing?
We're adjourned.
We have a second.